Feel free to talk amongst yourselves. It's not quite like church or anything.
Make sure the mics are.
Good evening. Today is Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. And I'll call this Fairfield Township Board of Educ- Board of Trustees. Sorry. Started a new job today. And, uh, Mrs. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trust- Trustee Harkemaia here. Trustee McAdie.
Here. Okay, is Pastor Joe here? Pastor Joe, would you come and lead us in the invocation and then y'all will remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let's pray together. Lord, I thank you for this day. Thank you for the beautiful day. You've given us some change of seasons. Lord, how beautiful that is. Father, you've instituted government to take everything that we as citizens cannot do. Father, tonight is a special night. Not only I pray that you might give the trustees wisdom, guidance from above, or it might indeed give us a prosperous, righteous nation again. Lord, tonight is a special night. We've got some folks that are the ones that are called out by thy hand when it's tough and dangerous before us. They run in when others run out. And we just pray you might give them your hand of protection. Lord, I pray that you might, in the midst of danger, Lord, you might guide and direct thy presence with them. Protection and safety. They might do what they do to keep us safe. We thank you for the privilege for them to work for us. Thank you for the privilege to have them serve us. Lord, I pray you might bless this meeting, its content. Lord, I pray you might bless this to thy glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pastor French? First item on our agenda is presentations. We have three resolutions. Will we have the first one, please?
Resolution 2362, authorizing the appointment of full-time firefighter EMT Douglas Smallcock to the Fairfield Township Fire Department at an hourly rate of $18.25 on a 24/48 shift with a six-month probationary period. Motion to adopt.
Questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaia? Yes. Trustee McAdie?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Might we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 2363, authorizing the appointment of full-time firefighter paramedic Erin Foley to the Fairfield Township Fire Department at an hourly rate of $18.25 on a 24/48 shift with a six-month probationary period.
What's to adopt?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaia? Yes. Trustee McAdie?
Yes. That resolution's adopted. Can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 2364, authorizing the appointment of full-time firefighter paramedic Dominic Hunter to the Fairfield Township Fire Department at an hourly rate of $18.25 on a 24/48 shift with a six-month probationary period. Motion to adopt.
Second. Any questions? Ms. Schultz, will you call the role, please?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaia? Yes. Trustee McAdie?
Yes. And that, that motion passes. Chief?
So first, I'd like to thank the trustees for allowing the fire department to continue our path to serve our community. Uh, the addition of these three gentlemen will help, uh, address our staffing needs and the future needs of the community and the fire department. Um, all three of these individuals currently are part-time staff members for us. Um, Mr. Foley and Mr. Hunter were recently given scholarships for paramedic school. And as part of their hiring, they're required to complete that school and pass. Uh, and that will help add additional paramedic staff for us. So we're very pleased to continue our path.
Time to administer the oath. Okay. Trustees?
Jonathan? Here, here, to me, okay? Father, state your name.
Adam Aaron Foley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Position out and state your position.
Position out for a paramedic.
For Fairfield Township.
For Fairfield Township.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Protect, preserve.
Protect, preserve.
And defend, defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And the rules and regulations of Fairfield Township.
And the rules and regulations of Fairfield Township.
And I solemnly swear to abide by.
And I solemnly swear to abide by.
And enforce the rules.
And enforce the rules.
Mission, vision, and values.
The vision, vision, and values.
Of the firearm.
Of the firearm.
So have me gun.
So have me gun.
One of the traditions in the fire service is a pinning ceremony. Uh, typically, when they're hired, join the fire department, get permitted, uh, we conduct what's called a pin ceremony. And at this point, uh, each of them is going to invite somebody who's very familiar with MAB to pin their badge on them for the first time. Uh, so we're starting. We're gonna go over the resolutions, so if you want to.
Bringing up my beautiful eyes over there, Carla.
Uh, bringing up my amazing girlfriends with me since freshman year, uh, Mackenzie. Bringing up my girlfriend as well, Brianna.
So I'd, I'd like to present you the three newest full-time members of Fairfield Township Fire Department. Congratulations. We're gonna go to buy the flag, and we'll get some pictures real quick. And then, uh, anybody that wants to take pictures is welcome to. Uh, once we get the pictures done, uh, we typically release all the visitors that wanna go next door and enjoy refreshments at the fire station. And if you really wanna stay for the meeting, you're welcome to stay. Let's go take some pictures.
If anybody wants to come up, you can tell me as long as you want. Smiles at all. Didn't sit there and smile. Everybody got all the pictures they want? Nope. I didn't. Yeah, for five minutes, that'd be good. At this point, anybody who'd like to enjoy, enjoy the refreshments and celebrate the hiring, would welcome to do so.
If you do wanna stay, Audra Nix is here, and she's gonna be giving us an update on what's going on, so.
Well, and specifically related to the property tax increases too. So that's been in the news a little bit lately. Uh, if you're interested and wants to learn more, you're welcome to stay.
Okay, um, our next presentation is from Butler County Auditor Nancy Nix. Where's yours?
Okay, so not a lot of crowd. I couldn't believe when I walked in here because I was at Monroe City Council, Laker Towne. There was nobody there. I'm like, oh, wow, they got all these things on the agenda. But Shannon texted me. Sure, maybe I was okay. Uh, anyway, uh, thanks for having me. I'm trying, Nancy Nix, I was appointed, um, to be the Butler County Auditor. After serving 16 years, I was the Butler County Treasurer. Um, I was appointed in, uh, February. And it's, um, a lot. It's a lot. It's a big job. Um, but I'm enjoying it. I'm not complaining. I just haven't been this busy. I think in a long time. Um, but I wanted to get out to the townships and meet you all, and I know most of you and say hi. We're, and I've sent out, um, some information about what our office does. Um, assessments, that's what's getting most of the, um, the news today, as you know. And so we do the appraisals and assessments for Butler County Tax Collection and then also rates and measures. So people may not be sure what rates and measures means, but we check gas pumps and scales at, uh, retail stores and gas stations to make sure that they're being honest, uh, with the amounts that are being measured. Scales, and they're going to show you they're buying some meat at the beef counter. Um, also the consumer services, vendor licensing, dog licensing. And also we're the chief financial officer for Butler County. So we do all the bill paying and, um, we produce the financial statements. So we're having about 30 people in the office, and, um, they work very hard. Uh, my predecessor, I, and his landlord, um, tremendous staff. I'm very grateful, uh, that they're hardworking, competent people. Um, so besides that, um, you've probably been waiting about the, uh, values increases. Not tax increases. They're different things. Um, and I do have some good news. Um, when we talk about value increases and the impact on taxes, normally, as values go up, rates go down, so the levy will produce the same amount of money. Um, but that, but when you have school districts at what is called the 20 mil floor, that's no longer the case. And when values go up at the 20 mil floor, the rates quit going down. So that's the easiest way I can explain it. Um, and the good news for Lakota and Fairfield School Districts is you are not at the 20 mil floor. So when we say a 42% or 39% or 24%, because all these value increases are out in the news, Fairfield Township, um, will be not as impacted, just like Westchester and Liberty Township, Fairfield City. Anybody that has, uh, school kids in Lakota or Fairfield School Districts will not be as impacted by higher inflationary value increases. So we are a mass appraisal office. Um, we have six appraisers within the office. As you know, um, in 2020, um, the former auditor had appealed the state's mandated 20% increase of values across the county. Um, and we were balking at that. And the former auditor took the case to the Board of Tax Appeals. No other auditor had ever fought so hard for, um, keeping the values within the auditor's control. Um, he was represented by the county prosecutor, and it took two years to go through that. It's kinda like a court. Um, and we lost that battle. So because he had the treasurer who was with the time, um, bill out at the lower values. And then by 2022, this court case at the Board of Tax Appeals entered. And so in February of '23, just three months ago, I'm still treasurer, and we had to send out bills to 40% of accounting with two years of retroactive tax increases. Not a good thing to do, uh, when nobody likes a tax bill. Anyway, they don't wanna pay past due taxes. Um, of course, they don't get penalties or anything like that. But this was fought, um, at the state level. The tax commissioner won the case, and so here we fast forward to now. We're in a triennial update, and I don't, and I explained this in a lot of the material, so I said, if you want some nighttime reading, so you understand what's, uh, in the papers. Um, we had a revaluation in 2020. Those values stay until 2023, and we have a triennial update. So the revow is the big year, 2020, 2026. But every three years after a revow is a triennial update where we are looking at market, uh, how the open market is doing with our conveyance information, command sales information. And the, um, tax commissioner does this for all the counties that are in the triennial update. And they draw all their sales conveyance information together, and they spit out a number and say, your countywide increases this much. So they gave, we, we were expecting 24% increase in our values, um, because of our internal numbers. And then we were shocked when it was 42, because we were, you know, three years ago, we were shocked at 20. So, um, and like I said, Fairfield Township won't be as harmed, but places like Hamilton, Middletown will really be a brunt of it because their lower, um, lower-priced housing might be $50,000, but then they're selling for $100,000 in this type of crazy market. And so their value increases overall might go at 50%, whereas, you know, you're trying to average it for countywide. But, um, Hamilton, Middletown also are at the 20 mil floor, their school districts, they have several levies. So those value increases will be proportionate to their tax increases. And they're already struggling, Middletown, Hamilton. But, um, rest assured, here are their four Fairfield Township residents. We just wanna make sure we're getting out, educating, um, our people. Sunday afternoon, we had 60 residents on the west side of Hamilton that wanted us to come talk in the driveway. And I was shocked that not many people cared enough to come talk about taxes on Sunday in May. It was a beautiful day. They were going golfing or birding or whatever, and they came to hear about taxes. So I know it's, uh, it's an issue that people are highly engaged with. And, um, this morning, Miss Sipsy Klein, the Referee of Realtors, they're coming from Warren County, Mason, Lebanon, just because it's so much in the median here. Now, um, Claremont County is at 43%, Butler County 42%, Montgomery County 37%. But it really depends on your county, how you're reacting. Um, Claremont and Butler are a little crazy. No, no, no. Montgomery County, mm, eh. It's, I think it's just different people and their mindsets, um, maybe ideology, um, we don't wanna pay taxes or, or have more of a collective mindset. So, um, we have, uh, we convened, the commissioners convened a summit a week ago Monday with our representatives and our state senator. And we were ready to fire. I mean, Don Dixon, um, started this ballroom. I mean, I announced what the amount was. He took it because he and I were both there after the financial crisis of, oh, right, when we saw delinquencies go sky high, foreclosures. And, um, we're like, who can do the writing on the wall? We need to be proactive. And so we had this, um, summit, um, a week ago Monday, and, um, legislators all of them came. They were very engaged. They went back to the state, and I really do think that they are making progress. Um, I was talking with Thomas today. He had a meeting, Thomas Hall, he had had a meeting with George Ryan and the tax commissioner Rodney Crouch earlier today. Jennifer Gross was with me on Sunday in Hamilton. Um, they are working hard with the Claremont County Senator, uh, meeting with, um, the tax commissioner and trying to figure out where they have discretion, where the tax commissioner can help, where they can help. Um, because I think it is a very, very critical issue. I said, maybe not Fairfield Township, but I think it is very critical for, uh, Middletown and Hamilton. Um, they are listening to us, and it's, because it's so complex, um, I've been living there these three months, and my fellow auditors tell me it's going to take two or three years before I can adequately explain tax calculations with the inside knowledge and the floor and the hospital 920, how they all work together. So I'm just taking them at the road, and I will get this eventually. Shelly Power will be able to get this more quickly. Um, but anyway, I think they are looking, the state, uh, legislature is looking towards the auditor, the auditors and, uh, county auditors to tell them what we can do. And our office did, um, produce that for the legislators at that Monday summit. Gave them a whole list, and in fact, on that floor builder sheet, it's on the backside, um, of possible solutions that they could come up with. You know, it could be increased through home stud. Uh, right now it's $25,000. What if they made it $75,000? Because as inflation rises, people are getting the home stud, it dilutes it. It makes it worth less. So, and then there are income parameters. Maybe we, um, raise that. It's what, $36,100? Maybe we raise it to $100,000? So that more people will be eligible for home stud, and the home stud's more meaningful. Now, that only would help certain people, um, elderly on fixed income. Uh, the, the constituents say that really has a hard time keeping up with their taxes. They try to stay in their homes, and we are cognizant of the hardship that they face. Um, so we gave them the list. We gave the legislators a list of possible solutions. Some of them are so long-term, they, it won't happen overnight, but there are some things that they might be able to come up with. The problem for the legislators is they're working on their budget, and a lot of these things like home stud would cost them money. They wouldn't have to take, allocate money that they have going somewhere else to lessen the burden of property taxes on local people. So I was speaking with, um, Representative Hall earlier about the things that they are, um, strongly considering, and it's very promising. So I have to give the commissioners credit for, um, well, sounding the alarm and convening this meeting. And so I think our job as the, the auditor's office is to just educate and let them know what the process is. It's a massive appraisal process, and what we're doing to try to lessen the burden. Um, there are areas where the auditor's hands are tied. Um, even, I will say that even if we get some of these things done, the very lowest increase would still be 24%. So we're just trying to get out of the margins. We're way up here. And so either way, the taxes are going to be increasing. Um, we have a lack of housing supply. We've, well, several of them have thrown trillions into the market. We've had supply chain issues. So it's sort of a perfect storm for an inflationary market, uh, market environment. Um, and so we're doing that in dimension resources, and so many people trying to get at those, doing the resources. And then there, there are two other issues that, um, I think I bring up in that folder above. There's school funding. Um, Michael, you were in the school part, right? Yeah, so you probably can speak to this way better than I can. But those school treasures, they, they strategize to maximize their revenue. And they'll get levies that won't be affected by the 20 mil floor, and that's their job. You know, I don't begrudge them for doing their job, um, but it, and there's a cer- certain point where it becomes a hardship for taxpayers to afford, uh, the level of schooling that, um, they're receiving. And then the other, um, part is exemptions, tips, RIDS, abatements, all those types of exemptions. They will have a large portion of your residential or commercial tax base not paying property taxes. And it makes it so much harder for regular people to be able to afford those taxes. Um, so it dilutes the base. So those are things, those are kind of long-term things that we need to increase awareness. So those are things, those are kind of long-term things that we need to increase awareness about the use of the baitings. Sometimes you're helping these developers, and it's a very big hardship on the residents in that city or township. And then the school funding, I think we all can agree that that's been a mess for a long time, but we have so many, so complex and so many interested parties. You know, the House can't simply decide on their own speaker, so getting them to make these decisions, really the most. And then we have 88 county auditors who may not agree on these solutions. So hopefully they will work out over time. We're doing what we can to lessen the tax burden on our residents, and we're just trying to get out to the public as much as possible. I'm sorry that my hair is walking, and then it was messy, I should have thrown it out, but I got them helping too. Anyway, I just wanted to say hi and let you know what's going on with the appraisal process. And I know it's a bit a lot. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer. What I gave you was a frequently asked questions. It's on our website, or countyauditor.org. And I don't want to take up your whole night, but you are free to call our office if you would like us to talk to any groups that would be interested. We're speaking to school treasurers tomorrow morning. That ought to be interesting, we're running some from them. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
So we get 42% more money here in Fairfield Township? Is that what you're saying?
No, that wouldn't work for Fairfield Township, because the rates would go down as the values go up, so that you still collect the same amount. It's the schools that end up getting the value increase. Because they have that 20 mil floor.
So the Fairfield Township residents are going to pay more for school taxes?
Correct. But not proportionately, because Fairfield School District is not at the 20 mil floor. Eighty of 10 school districts in Butler County are at the 20 mil floor, so they would pay proportionally higher taxes as values increase. But that is not the case for Lakota or Fairfield.
We're going to pay more, it's just not...
That's exactly right. Right. And I don't, I didn't want to throw out numbers, because the timeline of this, this is like baking a cake. We're just kind of throwing in the sugar right now. It won't be until November that this cake is baked. I mean, it's just, it's a long process. We've got to go back and forth with the state, with, you know, our neighborhood appraisals, and making sure that they're equitable and fair among the cities, the townships, the villages, and in those neighborhoods in between. So yeah, schools would be the winner of this massive value increase. But I can't even drill down into a neighborhood and say, okay, even if you're at 32%, your taxes are going to go up 12%. None of that we can say at this point, because it would be meaningless.
But as far as our fire and paramedic and police, we're going to get the same money.
We get the same, correct.
So again, we want people to understand that, even though their taxes are going up, it's not coming to us.
That is correct.
Not in that situation.
Exactly. Right.
We'll get additional money on our inside mirrors, maybe?
That's correct. Yes, yes. You would get a proportional amount on that. But that's, you know, not, like, Middletown is at the 20 mil floor, but they're at 48 mils. So it's, it's kind of messed up, the way it's all shaken out over time, all the layers of complexity on it.
The letter that you sent out in your former job, that came out around the first of the year, alerting everybody, that would be another good thing to see, you know, the second half bills coming out before long. It would be nice to say, it's coming. We're just going to...
Oh, you mean have an insert about the next February? Yeah. Well, we will know more by then, so that, I'll mention that to the treasurer, but yeah, that letter was very helpful. Now, those retroactive increases were all paid for in the first half. So they won't have those retroactive increases for the second half.
I didn't like paying it, but...
Yeah, you were in it, yeah.
So, I mean, but again, it was, and I understood that. It was, after I regained consciousness, I said, okay, part of this is for the last few years.
Yes.
The mortgage company doesn't understand that, so they're going to be hostage for a whole lot more money every month.
Yes. See, there were a lot of unintended consequences with the former auditor doing it that way. We would have never done it that way. I mean, I would have, I don't think the staff would have thought that was the right way, but rest of the member there. Because of all the bankruptcy and escrows and everything that got upended, and then having to, you know, educate everybody why you did. Do you care to tell me what your increase was?
I got a loan to be able to pay it. I mean, it was substantial. And like I said, now I get this nasty grant from my mortgage company that says, you're sure, we're going to charge you? And it was a sizable jump. Of course, they won't take my word for it, that it's not going to be another bill like that in August.
Wow.
So I'm waiting...
We tried to educate the mortgage companies about it as well. How they treat their customers, I have no idea. But we did try.
But I think that would be a good idea, to send that out later this year, when the treasurer's office are together, just saying that we know the increase is going to be there, we're all going to be affected.
That's a good idea, Jim.
Have some more information, where you could try to, you know...
We will, we will have more information by then. We won't have final information till November. But by then, by July, we have a word to tell from July. In fact, Shannon was texting me yesterday about writing a letter from your board.
Right, more from Butler County Township Association.
Oh, Township Association, right.
And also, if it would, if it would help from this board, we'd be willing to entertain that, too.
Yeah. When I told you, it's like, it's changing every day, you know, let me tell you on Wednesday. So the state...
But as a board, I'm sure we're not happy about the increase. And not just for the three of us, but for those 7,500 people out there in township.
Oh, for sure. The thing is, is they are real. I mean, the market is the market, it's true. And people are saying, well, it's not really an arms-length transaction. I had to have a house, so I had to pay $20,000 more than the asking price, so that's not really open market, that's under duress. I mean, I get that argument, but when we talk to fellow auditors, we're like, don't mess with our valuation system. It's in place, it's factual, it's based on data, and we don't want to be messing with the open market system. This is a bad time, maybe there are other fixes, trunks, that can lessen the burden now, but leave our value methods alone. So it's all kind of up in the air right now.
How much are County's rates for a foster?
They're not in the triennial right now. I don't know what their cycle is. We're with Claremont, and I know Preble is in a reval year. So they don't have our information yet, but they're going to be getting hard hit. No, 14 right now are in triennial, 24 are in reval. And it's an off year for all the others. So they have it kind of divided up. There's a schedule, if you looked up Department of Tax Equalization, triennial, reval schedule, it's all right there, which counties are in which cycle. So they have it divided up to even out their work for Department of Tax Equalization.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you, it's a good idea. If I have something wrong? Do you need any crowd?
Well, I know some unintended consequences where people that bought homes in the last, last year maybe, ended up getting a tax bill for a home that they didn't own two years ago.
Right, that did happen.
So I heard that from a lot of people.
Because the taxes stayed with the house.
Right. Also, if you could maybe leave some of this literature for us to have here in the office, if our residents want to stop in and pick up some. I think we can also put it on our website as well, but maybe people in the audience may want a copy of it, if you can leave.
Sure. And the frequently asked questions are right there on our main page, or countyauditor.org. Just call us or contact the auditor if you have any questions. David Brown, he gets back to people right away with these very well-thought-out answers. It's really good.
So you got dragged to a big fire?
I did, it's a lot. I'm enjoying it, not complaining.
Be careful what you ask for.
I know, I know, I know all these thoughts.
The township's setting on $20 million. Is there ever a point where a small new township like us would have, our tax rates would be generating more money, you know, than we really need? And, I mean, we're setting there, it's rolling from year to year. I'm getting involved, we're spending a lot of money, but we're still setting it...
I'm not sure what you mean.
And is there, is there ever a point where the auditor's office would say, you need to collect less retroactive?
Oh, that, not with townships, I don't think that's ever been. There are some agencies we have done that with, but all they have to do is show need, and maybe they'll build another building. So it depends...
In a network.
Yeah, so it depends on if it's an agency that's under the commissioners, or if it's an agency that has its own board. Now, development of this, we're sitting on a lot of cash, and you know, two-year reprieve, they've lowered their collections for two years. About what kind of commissioners did the same thing for a year, they didn't collect their inside much for a year. But then they were raising, oh, raise your taxes. So, yeah. But yes, like the libraries, they have a surplus cash, and then they, I think they just said they were going to build something that would be township. Yeah, that is a good, good topic, but I don't think it's ever been the issue with a township that I've ever heard.
Well, I can tell you that in the early 2000s, we had that conversation with the auditor at that point.
Oh, okay.
And we dealt with, again, how much we were carrying over, and our rates of what is generating. And of course, then we just broke loose as far as growth, things like that, so we found a way to...
Did you change your rates then? Did you collect what you did?
Did not. I mean, but we had, I was there and had that conversation.
Was it with Carrie?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it was about, okay, you know, you have this much money you're carrying over, this is what you got coming in, and this is what you keep spending. And, you know, it makes sense. We shouldn't just be setting on the money.
Oh, right. We haven't been rectify itself then.
Like I said, the township, we went from time and a half police officers...
Oh, you spent it?
And we grew, we...
Okay. Because of the growth, you spend it, okay.
Exactly. But again, we're setting here today, and Shelly will tell you, we're setting on $20, $22 million.
Wow.
You know, right now, you know...
Well, I would think that would be a discussion, can you lower the leverage to collect less?
The problem is, is with townships, we have, the two big expenses we have are people and equipment. As you saw tonight, we did three full-time hires. So a full-time hire is going to be about, what, $125 annually? So my intent, and this is just me, I don't want to go for a levy anytime soon. And so we are putting more and more into staff and personnel and equipment. I'd like to push that levy as far down the road as I possibly can. And the good thing is, is we have, I think, three loans that we're paying dead service on, and I think those retire, one of them next year, one of them in two years. So the good thing about that is, is that's going to start generating some more income for us, too. So I'm hoping that between what we have and between those, we're going to be able to keep the, put that towards staff, put that towards equipment, and push any levy down the road if at all possible. That's just one person's opinion.
Makes sense. Okay.
Anybody else?
Well, there isn't.
We can make it harder.
Thanks, Shelly.
Take care tonight.
Oh, yeah. Let me know, I have cards, too, if anybody needs one.
Thanks for having me, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is items for discussion. So strategic planning discussion. We left our last meeting talking about if we need to have some open to the public strategic planning, and so I'll put the floor up for discussion. Thoughts?
I would support that. I think, again, a lot of jurisdictions have, have some type of community, combined committee that, that meets and talks about, you know, where we are and where are we going, and how you get. I think that's always a good idea.
And do you envision that as like an open house setting, have certain hours for people to come in and out, or do you want a certain, like, open to the public where they can send in answers to a survey? What does that look like for you?
And I think both of those fit in. Again, and I don't really have a plan for how to do it, but I think that would be valuable information that we could, we could get from the community, the business leaders and the residents, the taxpayers, about the services we provide, the level of service, the types of service, and what they're, you know, willing to pay for and expect from us.
Is that something that you could put down on paper, certain survey questions you'd like to see asked? And then maybe we could set up a time where we're going to launch that, and then maybe when those are finished, have like an open...
Maybe a good way to do it?
To then discuss the results of the survey? Because I know that we had, we had a, a focus groups talk about zoning, but we also had a group, probably about 15 years ago, talk about how they wanted the rest of the township developed.
The comprehensive planning.
Comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I think about 10 years, we did another kind of focus group kind of thing, too, where we brought in and did some data collection as well.
And I'm sorry...
Nine or 10 years ago.
I'm sorry?
Nine or 10 years ago, something like that.
So, and so that was that key stakeholders in the community that were invited, or was it just open to the public for everybody to come?
Kind of thing.
Okay.
Wasn't particularly formal, yeah.
Okay. Well, might suggest that each trustee comes up with three to five questions that you'd like to see surveyed?
Well, I would say, too, what do we, what do we want, what do we hope to achieve?
Right.
What are the goals here? Well, no, what are the goals of the survey, and what are the goals of the focus group?
Right, so what do we do?
No, that's what I meant.
Once we get it.
But I'm, thinking bigger picture than that, when we get this, what are we going to do with it? If we have someone say, okay, we want to put in a splash pad, does that mean we're definitely going to do it, or is that just an idea to consider? So, I mean, and there's certain, what if they're, what if people come in and they're asking for something that isn't necessarily statutorily within our realm? Is that something we're going to entertain? What if they want? And so if we're going to open up for questions, are we going to be prepared for the answers?
I think, I think that it's, it would be a great opportunity for the trustees to come up with questions that, once we get the answers to them, we can put them in certain categories of, okay, well, this is a big wish that probably we can't do, or this is something that maybe we could do a little better research in, and if it's something within our realm, and it's the will of the board, that maybe we could accomplish those things. I think we can, we could turn them into services category, lifestyle category.
That would depend where the data shows, too.
Right.
I mean, it may go into those categories or not. And then the other, the thing, too, to think about, too, is if we open it up, residents might not necessarily be concerned that we have X number of people on fire, X number of people on police. That's important to us, that's important to our staff, because we can give the service. And then we're not worrying as much about staffing and those types of issues. We want to give Jeff, for example, the equipment that he needs to do the road repairs, but your average citizen isn't going to understand what that is. They might be asking for something completely different that isn't within our core values. So I would just caution that if we're opening this up to everything, we might not get the kinds of responses back that support our core values and our core mission.
That's a great point.
And I think we know that from the, whatever the answers are, you know, we can't just do whatever we want to do, like we have unlimited funds or whatever. But at least it would be, it would be a way to find out what the residents think about, where the township is.
Well, and another example of that is a DORA. So if we said, hey, we want a DORA at Bridgewater Falls, so that's not necessarily a decision, that's Bridgewater Falls' decision. That's their property, it's their venue. So I don't think it's right for Fairfield Township to say, hey, Bridgewater, you need to put in a DORA. That's got to come from them, not necessarily us. So just kind of an example.
Great. Okay. Well, I still think we should at least visit the idea of putting a survey out. I think we could control the way it's worded, and I think we should come back as, as a group, maybe next meeting, with three to five questions that you'd like, or maybe we should submit, should you want them submitted to maybe the administrator and have her compile something?
Yes. Yes.
Would that be better? And then maybe, um, she can also then run the questions by the law director, see if that's something we should even be asking, if it's within our possibilities of granting. Um, so let's put a, let's put a date of, let's see, our next meeting is mid-June. Um, how about if we put, um, a two-week timeframe on it? Have something submitted to the administrator via email or hard copy, um, two weeks from today, which would be the 23rd. And then she could have those sort of vetted in a certain way, and then we could have it on our next, uh, meeting to discuss. And I think we, there's a group we'd agree on the questions. Like I may want something asked that the two of you are like, you're new to this, you don't need, we don't need to know those types of things. Um, and then we don't put it out. So I'll say three to five questions that you'd like to see asked of the group, and then at our next meeting, we'll try to decide on when to have that launched. Then once we get those responses back, we can look at, well, when should we have sort of an open house setting for the people to come in and, and give us input? Is that clear?
Sounds good.
Okay. Sure. So at least step one, look at questions we might wanna put out to the public, and then we'll see if we need to go further with it. Okay? Are you seeing the direction? Okay. Great. Next item is fire department vehicles. Chief Thomas.
So at the last meeting, we had some discussion about vehicle purchases and the significant cost increases that occurred along with the extended delivery dates, and there was discussion on whether or not we should entertain a sales agreement in order to lock the pricing in and make sure that we had an escape clause within that. Um, I was able to get a, uh, quotes from two ambulance manufacturers and from the fire apparatus manufacturer. Uh, and the fire apparatus manufacturer agreed to a 12-month, uh, clause that we could exit that contract with no penalties. The, um, one ambulance company said they really didn't care when we could exit it the day they built it because they weren't gonna have any problems solving it. Uh, and then the Horton, which was the lowest bid, uh, so they would allow us to exit that up to the bed reading, which is like four months before they actually built the truck. So, um, and we could, again, exit that without any penalties. So, um, the ladder truck came in at just under 1.5. Uh, and to give you an idea of where that went, uh, when we first started talking about the truck with the sales division, we were in the $900,000 range. So, um, he also called me yesterday to tell me that his 30-month delivery date is no good anymore. It's now up to 34 months. So, uh, both costs and delivery times are continuing to be extended. So, um, he did not have any information on a pay, uh, a price increase at this point, but, uh, I think it's safe to assume that the, at some point, I would anticipate another raise. So, um, the ambulance, I believe it was 268,000, ladder truck was just under 1.5. And then the other vehicle that we had some discussion about was, uh, the service department had asked, uh, to purchase a vehicle for signs and other work assignments, and they wanted to get a utility body truck to do that. And I met with Jeff. Uh, the current F-250 that the fire department has, uh, is in excellent shape, um, but with the, with the trailers that we have to tow, it's only an F-250. So I asked Jeff if the fire department would be interested in that vehicle, and we have negotiated a, uh, a deal that they would end up with our F-250 and we would buy a larger vehicle, uh, the same chassis that our ambulance set on the F-550, which would give us the towing capacity for the safety house. Um, we got rid of two three-quarter ton Suburbans, uh, that used to tow that, uh, so we're kind of a little lacking in the tow capacity right now. And I thought that would be an economical way for both of us to get what we needed. So, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Questions?
So the 1.5 for the ladder truck, you just got one price from one vendor on there?
Yes. That is the same vendor that we bought our last piece of apparatus from. We did look at other vehicles, and I believe that vehicle is to be the one that would provide the best, uh, options for us.
And is that state bed? I mean, how do we?
Yes, that is a state bed. The ambulance is around state bed, the fire trucks are on state bed, uh, the vehicle chassis that we're trying to look at for a service vehicle is also a state bed product.
So that keeps us in that middle of building process.
Correct.
What if the price comes down?
I'd have a heart attack first, uh, but realistically, I have not seen a price come down on a piece of fire or EMS apparatus in 30 years.
Well, what do they have to do? I mean, that's huge.
Yes, it absolutely is.
I don't know, at some point, it comes in less than a...
So I would suspect if there's some major change, uh, that we would, uh, work with the law director to modify the contract. Um, and I think the companies that we deal with, uh, deal nationally, and I don't think they would not sit down with us if that, if that happened, if there was some significant decrease in cost. But based on everything I'm seeing, I haven't seen anything come down.
Yeah.
And like I said, the opportunity of locking that price from going up, I think is a great advantage right now.
Which is what we talked about last time.
Correct.
And the vendor for the fire truck was?
E1, which is, uh, is the regional sales out of Kentucky.
Nope, out of this time.
Um, I will just speak my truth. I normally do. Um, I understand, um, the medic unit, I'm having, um, some apprehension about fire ladder truck. Not about locking a price in, but, and I'm just gonna say from inexperience, knowing the, what the lifespan is of a ladder truck, and the use is that what we're currently using our current ladder truck for, and, um, at 1.5 million is a tough pill to swallow. And I'm having a lot of apprehensions around the 550 truck to pull around a smokehouse. It just seems like a lot of money to pull around, to have just to pull around a smokehouse to events. Um, and so the current vehicles that we're using, the 250, can't handle the smokehouse?
So it's not only the smokehouse, it's the, the new utility trailer that we have the bounce houses in, it's the Gator trailer, the silver trailer that's out behind the firehouse. Um, and again, I don't know what we're gonna have in the future, and this was just a simple opportunity. And because what other vehicles are available, the difference between buying an F-350 and an F-550 is about $4,000 to get all that extra capacity. It's $2,000 to grow up each chassis size. We went through that when we looked at the ambulances for the same issues, and it literally comes out to about $2,000 to move up from a 450 to a 550. So.
I just get nervous when there's time out.
Right.
Going to getting so many vehicles, I know that we've replaced so many vehicles in the past, and I'm not doubting that this is a, I mean, I know that the service department needs a heavy-duty vehicle, and you currently have one in your fleet that fits their needs, and the transfer would be very smooth. Um, I guess I was just at sticker shock at over $90,000 for a pickup truck. I know, I get it.
Because.
I understand that, and I have one. I have a truck I bought in 2018, right before they skyrocketed, but I know how expensive pickup trucks are. I understand that. But for something that is not used every day for daily fire rescue, it's, I'm not saying I'm against it, but it's difficult for me. I'm just speaking truthful to you. It's, it's difficult for me. And I know, like trustee McAfee pointed out before, that we do have money sitting there that we've already collected from the taxpayers, but we also are doing our due diligence to try to spend it wisely, and, um...
One of the things that I find that, when we go to talk about the large purchases and fire trucks and those items of significant cost, when you look at the $90,000 or $37,000 for that pickup truck, if you divide it by the, the minimum of 10-year lifespan, it brings it to a much more reasonable expectation.
Okay.
Um, the good thing is, we don't use them every day. So we buy it, and it's not gonna last five years, it's gonna last 15 years more likely. So it brings that cost per year into something that seems to be a lot more reasonable. And it's the same thing with the ladder truck. It's a million and a half dollars spent over 20 or 25 years. It's not as bad as looking at it that you're only gonna have it for five years and you're spending the 1.5 million dollars. You know, I, I can't sit here and not feel the same pain that you're feeling because I remember buying ambulances for $40,000. And you can't find a wrecking ambulance for $40,000, it seems like, anymore. Um, so, you know, I don't know that there's any answer that ever is gonna make these prices feel good to anybody.
So, what, can I ask a quick question? What do we tow these things with now? Do we, are we dead in the water? We have no ability to tow the smokehouse anymore right now? We have no, nothing? And how did we get in that situation? Because we used to...
Well, we used to use the three-quarter ton Suburbans. We have a one-ton single-rear axle pickup truck, which still struggles because it doesn't have the capacity of a dual.
Are we just taking it to the fairgrounds?
Well, it goes wherever it needs to go, whether it goes to the fairgrounds or goes to another community. But, you know, we also do the water rescue, so we tow the boat, which isn't very heavy. But then we also are committed to responding the Gator trailer as well. So, and that's a 30-foot-long trailer that's full of equipment.
I wish we would've kept the Suburbans. I mean, that would've been...
They were a long vehicle for what we do. We should've had a bigger tow vehicle to begin with, in my opinion. And we, we thought the F-250 was gonna be able to do that, but it just doesn't seem to. It's also gas versus a diesel, so its towing capacity isn't a little bit what we're...
What is the weight capacity for the, the trucks that we have currently? And what's the weight for the smokehouse and the other items?
I do not know the weight on the... It would be probably close to 20,000 pounds for that safety trailer.
Okay.
And the tow capacity on an F-250 should be in the neighborhood of about 18,000 pounds. So it's real close, but to just hook it up, the truck is not sitting level, which means it's a unsafe towing issue is what I'm concerned with. And we have a lot of young people that work for us, and if they go out and get in a vehicle that's not safe because it's sitting with the front tires not enough weight for steering, that's why I'm trying to upgrade, and this was an opportunity to do that, that's all. So we will continue to make do with what we have if that's what the board wants us to do.
Interesting.
75,000 is the cost for the truck, and then the equipment would be around 21,000.
Yeah, that's the utility box to put a, uh, compartment box, service body on it. So, then I bought my F-350 for like $50,000 when I bought it a couple of years ago.
Your personal vehicle?
Before the prices were out.
Personal vehicle?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think we should also probably, I'd like to see like what our vehicle plan is going forward, maybe for the next five years, because we've bought a lot of stuff, and I'm kinda curious really when, you know, we've replaced a lot, we've bought a lot, and I'd like to maybe get a whole picture of what this looks like going forward, so that we're not, and I'd like to have a plan so that we know if we have to tow certain things that we're buying that vehicle at the time, that we need that vehicle. Um, and we don't go and buy things that are too heavy to haul, and we don't get rid of the trucks that we need to haul certain things. So I'd kinda like to get an inventory of what that all looks like, and maybe what we see being needed for the next few years too, so that we can plan for that.
Chief has always had a really nice vehicle replacement plan, so we really, um, there are so many board changes, we didn't follow that initially, so...
I know he's talking, but I haven't seen it.
Oh, he, he keeps track of everything, so, um, but even though we're talking like we have a lot of money as we hire a full-time staff, I'm looking more holistically at every department, and those salaries, that's gonna, that's gonna eat away fast. So, one thing I suggested, let's, let's at least look at what's possible in used in 550s and ladders. You can, I have heard you can find some really decent equipment, so that, that's an option. I don't know if the board wants to entertain that, but I, I wanna give you more options and make sure the board's comfortable before they make any kind of decision.
I mean, I'm, I'm curious about what used the vehicle's cost, but at the same time, are we buying somebody else's trouble? Why are they, why are they selling it? Um, I mean, I've been a used car buyer my whole life. I don't really like to buy new cars, um, 'cause I don't know what you're buying, right? So, um, but how many, how many miles does the truck have on it that you're, 'cause you seem like I put a lot of miles on it. The truck that you're looking to transfer.
10,000.
Yeah, it's, it's...
It's 10,000 miles, and it's a 2016.
Yes.
So seven years old.
And that's why I thought used would make sense. I don't often, and I know chief's not a proponent, so I don't look to buck. I listen to the team and leaders, but if there's something that is not being used often, and we could, and he, if anyone could find something, he could, that man's a wizard. So, um, so that was my thought with the 550 medics, I feel differently.
Yeah. I think our medic and... I also think the ladder truck should be new, probably, unless it's got 3,000 miles on it. But, um, I mean, is there a scenario where we're using the... The one vehicle we need for emergency response is to pull the boat, correct? Because...
And the water rescue.
And the Gator.
And the Gator.
The Gator goes on an emergency basis as well. We respond to hazmat incidents with that, lost people, searches.
Okay.
It also is equipped with the traffic cones and sign agents and other stuff now that they've lead down the trailer.
Because what I don't wanna have happen is firefighter pulling something in an emergency situation in a vehicle that might not be equipped to handle that load, whereas opposed to you're just using it to pull the firehouse, that's all timed out. You could have someone with experience jump in a vehicle and pull the firehouse and be careful and not worry about the traffic darting in front of them when they're blaring their lights. Um, so you don't move my eyes. So you open my eyes a little bit and I appreciate the education on the need. It's still, but the little bit of use that it has, it's hard to, for me as a Joe consumer, Joe taxpayer, to see that major expense.
Well, I can tell you currently I have looked for used fire apparatus and I've looked for used utility stuff and it is not out there. And the things that I have found, for example, I found a two thousand eight ladder truck. They want eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for it. That's the same year as what we have.
Right. So, I mean, just like, it's hard to find a used car nowadays because people aren't training them in because there's no inventory to buy another one.
But there's no inventory to buy new stuff. Everything is in flux right now, but.
So what's the world of war? What direction do we want to go? We looking to have something for the chief to go out and get a contract that, would it be the administrator executes the contract purchase for the chief? I'm looking for some direction on where you feel we should go.
Are we talking about the truck?
I think we should take one by one, one case by case. Let's talk about the medic. I think we're on agreement. We probably need the medic, right? So let's go out and get a contract for a medic and it takes thirty-something months, you said, or is that the ladder? Okay.
The ladder truck's the one that's thirty.
I'm fine with the medic.
Okay, so the medic. Do we need to have a motion to? Okay. So, and what was the estimated price?
It's two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Like, before we had at one point. No, it wasn't. It was more than that.
We have a resolution for that and a package.
I don't think so.
I would say we need a resolution for that.
For the purchase, right?
Right.
Okay. So how about we have them just get a resolution together for the next? We're going to meet in two, three weeks.
It's three hundred and sixty-eight thousand for the medic.
Well, then never mind.
I can forward that to.
Is two to three weeks from now sufficient? Would they honor that? Or are we going to talk about another hundred thousand dollars for?
The salesman legitimately cannot guarantee a price past the thirty-day window that they gave us when they gave us the quote. Because he doesn't control the pricing and they have to go back and get it re-quoted every time they draw a new agreement. Which, that is about forty thousand dollars less than the second quote that I got. They were three ninety-two or ninety-three, so.
Set my days lap before the quote expires.
Forty-five, price is good for forty-five days from the date of the agreement and he sent me the agreement on the twentieth of last month.
Twentieth of April?
Yes.
So we have into June, right? Not much into June. So the twentieth? June fourth?
Which would be before the next meeting.
June fourth is the forty-five days.
So do we want to do a motion now and follow up with the resolution? Next meeting, Katie?
Could we do, could we do an emergency meeting maybe next week just to prove the resolutions? I mean, it would take five minutes to do. Could you be more comfortable with that? Tricia McAfee?
Well, I mean, we've got to move the June meeting anyway, right? We haven't set a date.
Haven't set a date yet, but it's. What's the first workday of the month on June? What is that?
I'm just doing the first, second, third is, that is the more of an occasion. We're talking about.
It had to be the first or second.
Next week anyway.
It had to be the first or second.
I mean, I can meet the first. We just have our June meeting on the first.
I would, I'm not available that evening, so what would we think about doing a day meeting?
That could be Friday morning, the second.
Friday, I'm available after one o'clock.
About the first.
First, I'm available before I, any time in the morning. Up till probably noon. Which might be a good mix then, because there might be residents that are in our system coming in the daytime. So if we did, and I think staff might like that too, so that you're here during normal working hours instead of late.
It's too late.
So eight-thirty on the first.
Okay, so then we don't have to have a motion tonight. We can have a resolution on the first. Okay, so the second conversation will be about the ladder truck. Like I stated, it's a tough pill for me to swallow, but I don't want to have to take that pill two years from now when it's a three-million-dollar truck.
Well, it's going to take us at least thirty-four months, more than likely to be longer than that. So again, that makes our current truck rather twenty years old, isn't it? So I think it's, I think we move ahead with that. I mean, I don't like the one and a half million dollars either, but we have places in the township that need that extra length.
And I would encourage to look at used. Maybe there would be something low mileage that happens to come in and if we get a cancellation clause, that could work to our advantage too.
Good. Now we do have a resolution on the agenda tonight for the five-fifty.
I made a mistake. My, I meant to have the medic and not the five-fifty. So I did not catch that and have it changed by Diane. So that's why that is happening the way it's happening.
Do we want to do the resolution?
We should still do that on the first.
Yeah.
Right?
I'm fine meeting on the first. We were going to move that meeting anyways.
Okay, so.
And I'm okay with the ladder truck. Are you okay, Mr. Burning?
Yes. I'm okay with it. I'm not great with it.
Is that what I'm saying? It's the money part?
Okay. It's a necessary, I feel it's necessary, because like you said, if it's going to take three years to get it, in three years, we're not sure of the condition of our current ladder truck. That there genuinely is a need for it. I don't, I don't want someone to lose their life because we didn't have a ladder truck to reach them, so.
Well, and again, with the residential developments that's left and the commercial developments, that those are really big buildings down there on Stewart Road. I mean, I think the demand for that apparatus is only going to get bigger.
I have mutual aid too, so, not that I'm thinking we don't need it. That's not what I'm saying. But we do have mutual aid to assist and we can help others too.
Sure. And what's your opinion on the five-fifty? It is listed as a first read for tonight. Which means we don't have to approve it tonight, but.
Well, I mean, if there's something out there that will do everything we need it to do, that's not a five-fifty, you know, or not as much equipment, somebody to get the price down, maybe you ought to look at it. But seventy-five thousand for that size truck, that's the wrong price. We have the money in the budget. What's the turnaround on that? Is that already made and ready to go?
No, Valley Ford has the statewide contract and she has some trucks on order, but they are not on the ground. And she will place this order and if she can fill it with one of her non-committed vehicles, she will. But she couldn't tell me when that would happen, so.
We've had to wait on police cars for a couple of years, so again. Let us save for the first read of the night and then finish it up on June first or go ahead and do it tonight. That best look was Tom, but Casey is, again, he says he's already looked and I believe him, so we're not going to pay seventy-five thousand for something that's used.
Is it possible that we can make this vehicle available for other departments if they need it? Or is that, say the police department needs to haul something? Yeah? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay, well, thank you for that discussion on that. So when that resolution comes up this evening, if someone wants to make a motion to adopt, that's okay. If anyone wants to, if you want to wait, I'm okay with that as well.
I'm fine waiting too.
Okay. So in a few weeks, right?
Yeah.
Okay, the next item is our June thirteenth trustee meeting. Again, and the audio agenda says tentatively change to June sixth. There was a conflict that night at the North Hamilton Crossing. Next stakeholder meeting was going to be that night, so it was. Did you get that email?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Tricia McAfee, did you get that email?
Well, I thought it was a different day, but maybe you might be right.
So we're going to move it to June first. And did you say eight-thirty AM?
Eight-thirty.
Do we need to have a resolution or motion to do that?
Okay.
Because we have an advertised date or anything. Okay, great. Well, we are moving to communication, which this is a portion of the meeting where you, the residents of Fairfield Township, are invited to share your thoughts with the board. Please note, this time has been set aside from the board to listen to you. Your comments are valued and will be taken into careful consideration. The board will not engage in dialogue at this time. Presentations are limited to three minutes each. First one is Dr. Fred Valerius. I've already started your clock.
Thank you for the opportunity to do a promotion for the June third dedication of the Veterans Memorial.
This has been a journey of almost seven years. When John Cargill and I started this, I didn't expect that he was going to pass away three years later. Well, I'd be babysitting twice a week. Or that I'd have physical issues, but we're going to get there. And we're at the cusp of reaching an important development, phase one and two, and the flagpole's being completed. And so that's why we're having the dedication. Because in looking at what the entire memorial will look like, for most people, it'll look like, hey, it looks like it's finished. But we know there's some additional work that has to be done. But anyway, we're fulfilling your tagline up there, great history and bright future. This is, this memorial is literally going to put Fairfield Township on the map of Butler County and maybe southwestern Ohio. And I'm not kidding here, a bold smoke. I had a conversation with the county administrator. She couldn't even tell me where Heroes Park was. I talked to her the other day. She was kind enough to put us on the commissioners meeting to talk about it, Barney Landry, which just kind of shows we're one of the townships that's kind of invisible. Maybe that's a good thing. Because we want to be remembered for the best things and that is for the people of this community. And I want to thank in particular all our department heads, Julie, and our staff here who have really helped us particularly this last six months on putting together the arrangements, the billing for the state funding, and there's just a whole host of things. In fact, we'll be meeting again tomorrow on the arrangements. But anyway, June third, Heroes Park. Some people would have called it American Road Park. Some people used to call it Marshfield Park. But we've got one name for it, Heroes Park. And in the future, we look for heroes in other locations in the whole area besides our veterans. But we are starting with that group. When you see the granite monuments installed next week, you will be blown away, literally. Now, I passed around invitations there because what I'd like you to do, there's another, there's one for each of you and another one. Now, write a little personal note to someone you want to make sure comes on June third. Particularly if they got a wallet that has some money in it. We're still about fifty-nine thousand from completing the entire project. And that's the entry-level monuments primarily and just like fire equipment, the price of granite has jumped dramatically. And again, a lot of it's transportation. But we're very close to sealing the deal. And like I said, on June third, we will have the ribbon cutting. We'll have our Memorial Day observance. We have some key people that will be part of the program. Craig McKee, the anchor for Channel Nine, will be our master ceremonies and one reason he is going to be that who's why we picked WCPO. Well, I don't think we have any other anchor in the Cincinnati area that served nine years. It's about. In fact, his broadcast career started in the Air Force. And you will be very impressed if you look up on our website, because we're going to be featuring the key people. And one of those is Senior Master Sergeant Kristen Tholey. Wait till you see her resume of the experience she has as an Air Force officer and performer. Once again, you're just going to be totally impressed by that. But the thing that really has made this project, I think, a bit different is how much personal commitment of their own money has gone into this project. We've got some folks who have really punted up to make a difference. One of those, of course, you know, is Barney Landry. He pass the bridge all the time. I mentioned a few. Well, you know that bridge you pass out there? Have you ever looked at that name? I want to tell you several stories about Barney. I won't do that tonight, but we did tell, Barney got to tell a story to Hamilton Rotary the other day. And I'll tell you, I never saw so many draws that had to be picked up off of the table. And he delivered it perfect. Well, we have another family that has stepped forward to be a sponsor. They have been thinking about it for, I think, several years. So at this point, I'd like us to recognize the contributions of Carl and Peggy Meyer, who will be sponsoring the Vietnam War bench. And that's where we need the most additional support is to finish out the benches. Those are actually Phase Four. But we're actually being able to move a little bit early. But anyway, I'd like Carl and Peggy to step forward and be recognized and. I know, I can, so really sad. You know, I mean, it didn't say something.
You didn't tell me about this part.
I know, but I didn't want to surprise.
I didn't wanna surprise. Tell us the personal reason that you got a commitment for this.
Well, we've been residents of Fairfield Township now for about seventeen years, we used to live in Claremont County. At my work throughout the years, I've been based a lot of places around the country, and this is probably what we consider to be the best of all of them.
It is.
We're happy to be here. I'm a Marine Corps veteran, I'm a two-tour Vietnam veteran, and my family, I have a son and a daughter who's a doctor and a lawyer, and, you know, we have an amazing family, and I wanted them to have something that they could show the grandkids and the great-grandkids down the road, you know, a little something that grandpa did. So that's probably the biggest motivation that we had, is to the dedication of our family and dedication to all Vietnam veterans. So we're happy to do it, we're honored.
Before you run off, you wanna get your picture taken? Can we get that done?
Okay.
Be in good position. Yeah, Chief Thomas, you're always good at this. I could use my phone, but...
Why don't you stand by the flag?
Yes.
If you wanna walk over by the flag.
And they call it on a key point, we have a flock of talking to a number of families that are honorary members of their families who never lived in the township, but this is one of the few places where they can leave their fathers or grandfather's graves. I'm pretty close to the touch of the flag.
I would say I would pick one right here, like next to the flag, yes, right there, like that?
Yes. I'll give them this for that, maybe, when I'll get it ready. Ready?
Ready.
I got the trustees ahead, they can do whatever you wish.
It'd be wonderful. Stay this way, somebody by me.
Okay, everybody ready? Wow, thank you so very much. Appreciate it very much, thank you, and very generous.
Thank you for doing all that.
Thank you so very much, very generous.
Thank you for the opportunity that you're here. We love this township. It's not what it was. We've lived a lot of ways through the years, this is the best. I was really new, my first time coming here, too. Thank you for being still here. Thank you, yes.
Thanks, Fred.
Folks, one more recommendation, I can't resist this one. When I get off at the exit off 129, I wanna see a sign out there.
Good idea.
That attractions says Heroes Park, Fairfield Township Veterans Memorial.
I like that.
And I've already talked to the tourism board, if we can have a donut trail in Butler County, we should be able to have a veterans memorial trail, so there we go. We'll see, June 3rd, 1:30, if you're gonna be in the fray, I think most of you that are, we already know, but you can, we can follow, 12:30, by J.C. Penny. Okay? The people in Lakewood will be sure proud to see us.
Thanks, Fred. Thank you, Fred. Well, that was pretty amazing.
Awesome.
These are we have people yelling at us, that was awesome.
Still thunder.
I hope Maria doesn't come up and yell at us for anything. All right, the next person is Maria Tanji.
Hi, everybody, it's been a while since I've been here, it's winter, but spring is here and so is the community garden. We are back open and on a regular schedule, so every Thursday from 5:30 to 7:30, we're gonna be open for people to come, be present, and see what's going on. The garden beds have changed, so that's exciting, and we've gotten some a mirror from Sam Casey and kind of turning it in right now, getting it ready. Most of the beds are ready to go, and hopefully we will be planting this Thursday and then maybe Sunday. I'll be out on Mother's Day because I'd rather be there now than spend the rest of the time, I'm just kidding. She'll be there too. Yeah, okay, just checking. But for, for this year of the summer, to make sure we have a day that we're actually gonna be there regularly so that people know we're present. So that's what I decided, it's Thursday at 5:30 to 7:30 after I get off work, lunchtime. What else do I wanna say? Oh, we have a flower bed, a raised bed, and a people culture bed in Spurts, so we'll be starting with that there as well. Anything else that happened? I don't know. Things are just moving along, we're ready to start the season, I've been itching for these days since last season, so, what else? There was something we were talking about earlier. I'm really excited about this township. Every time I tell people, when we said people think we're like a little invisible, invisible place, we are, and they're like, oh, you don't care, they're like, we don't, we don't own the township. Just be clear, everybody. But I'm really excited that I live here and that this is my community. That's all, I guess, because I forgot what it is that you guys were talking about, I wanted to bring up. Oh, okay, so on the agenda, you said that you were trying to have questions that you wanna ask us. I'm not trying to bring Hamilton into this, but Hamilton does a thing on Saturdays once a month, it's called Coffee with Cancer, and to make something a little less formal, like, whatever, however you wanna say it, where you pick a time, if you're trying, I don't know what you're trying to find out from us as community members, but, you know, many people don't, we probably know who you are, you know, until being out in different parts of the community, you might be late to get questions from people specifically on what that means, and making it more casual and not so formal, because I think our town, a lot of people in our township are formal, more formal than they are. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Next item is committee reports, TID, trustee McAbey.
Yes, the TID met yesterday. TID met yesterday, and we passed two resolutions. One was for an application for track money, ten million dollars to purchase the right-of-way for the Milliken Road Exchange. They've been laying the groundwork for this, it's a little different than normal, but we're asking, we're gonna ask for that upfront. That would give us more negotiating power with the jobs that we think will come to that part of Liberty Township. And then the second resolution was an open for OKI funding for the roundabout, which will be the Washington Boulevard intersection, really the western end of the North Hamilton Crossing. It's where originally they hoped to cross the river there, it's looking less and less likely that that's what's gonna happen. They didn't make any declaration about that, but the traffic has increased probably over the last twenty-four months because of the closing of some of the streets in Hamilton, the Spurts complex was being built, and now that it's open, Alan said the traffic in that street or roads that come together there was up fifty percent, so they're gonna move ahead with that and try to get some OKI money to get that preliminary going. It may be actually two roundabouts connected to be able to handle the intersection, I don't know if you guys travel out very often, but it was bad enough before the traffic increased, but now it's even, especially with the school there on the ground. But those are the two things. They did not announce the date for the next stakeholder meeting, but we, I think all the stakeholders have received the email about the 6th of June, and I wanna say that's 5:30 at the engineer's office. You'll also be able to attend virtually, if that's what you wanna do. If you read the email, it's, it's just been overwhelming, the amount of responses that they have, and comments and everything else, so it'll be interesting to see what those findings are. And we do meet again shortly thereafter, the OKIs, we're scheduled to meet again in June, but that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for trustee McAbey? Okay, thank you very much. Next, AI and Cloud, trustee Hofermeyer.
Okay, a couple of things on, we had the EMA meeting today, a couple key points, they put some money into the fairgrounds over there, so be on the lookout for that, some new paving and whatnot. We did a review on the tornado that went through at Mars, so if you're interested, there's some information available on that. The 911 system is switching to the RAV system, which has some changes. Let's see, there was a monthly training email, are you getting that? Okay, excellent. So that's a good opportunity as needed for staff. There were five spills that registered through the LEPC. Let's see, a couple other things. There is, right now, EMA has a significant amount of items in storage at the fairground, and the fairground is not gonna be renewing that lease, so we're trying to look for some other places to put that equipment, it's gonna be things like PPE and different things that they have, so they're gonna be looking for either to maybe cut down on some of it, pare it down, maybe look at storing it someplace else, so there's some talk about that. I don't know if that's gonna impact Fairfield Township or not, but just as an FYI. And let's see, there's another hazard mitigation plan on June 8th, you're probably aware of that, and that is about it for now. For OKI, I will be attending that on Thursday, and Cloud, nothing to report there.
Okay. Any questions for trustee Hofermeyer? Thank you for those updates. The next item on the agenda is Department Spotlight, Public Works, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening. Fairfield Township Public Works, it is on mission to serve the community with the highest quality workforce and ethics for day-to-day operations. Currently, this department maintains approximately thirty-three acres of parkland, not to mention the approximate 1.3 miles of bike trail that runs through the north side of the township, and several properties in the east view and Belmont subdivisions. Along with the park areas, we have the responsibility of maintaining approximately eighty-one miles of roadway throughout the township, with more to come with the new developments. We have the responsibility of clearing the road of snow and patching any areas that may need attention. During this past snow season, we used approximately 451 tons of salt along with 2,422 gallons of brine mix. At this current time, we have eight full-time employees. Along with the snow, we also maintain the stormwater systems within the township, along with maintaining open ditches. We are currently setting up a program, so we have documentation of any inspections done, along with the monthly stormwater inspections for the county of our properties. Over the past year, we have repaired approximately nineteen catch basins, with three of them being a total rebuild. In the future, we see this as an ongoing issue due to the age and the wear to the brick and mortar of the catch basins. Not only are the basins an issue, but we have also replaced five different pipes from collapse or just age. As always, we do our best when dealing with residents calling with water issues. Over the past years, we have been able to purchase newer, more efficient equipment to enhance our quality of work. As mentioned, the pushcammer has saved us countless hours and has paid for itself temp foam. We now have a total of nine dump trucks ranging from 2005 to 2021. We also have trucks for everyday use that are replaced more often due to the use. We now have a building that we, as a department, are very proud to call our workplace. We that with all the improvements made in this department, that we can provide what the residents need from a public works department. It is our vision to serve our community with the core functions of public works, to develop and maintain our streets, parks, and infrastructure for a brighter, safer Fairfield Township. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Bennett?
Proud of the work you do.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Keep it up.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I think that several residents have talked about how much they love living in this area, and I think each department has a stake in that and deserve credit for it, and so Public Works Department, at times, is often the face of their lifestyle, right? Because you maintain the parks and you make sure the roads are cleared, so you don't often get the accolades for it, like firefighters and police get, so thank you for all your efforts, and please pass our regards on to your crew as well. Okay, the next item is fiscal officers' recommendations and reports, Ms. Schultz.
The first thing I'd like to report is the balance, which, as Ms. McAbey said, is twenty-three million currently. And then I wanted to talk about the debt and let you know that since tonight we're doing debt payments, the first bond will be up in 2024, and the third bond will be up in 2024, and then the second bond will be up in 2027, and the five-million-dollar loan in 2025. So I wanted to report that, if you have any questions, let me know. And then the last thing is, since we're moving our meeting to 6/1, our next meeting won't be till 7/11, and I'll need you guys to approve the 2024 budget at that time. So I can't have it ready by the 1st as the county budget, yes, as I use numbers through May 31st, so I can have it ready maybe the week after an email to you, and then if you guys wanna ask me questions before approval, you can do that by email, if that's okay. So look forward to the second week of June.
That's the tax budget?
Yes, the tax budget. And then I'll need an approval on the 11th, assuming our meeting stays the 11th of July.
Any questions for Ms. Schultz? Thank you very much. At this time, I will move to suspend the reading for the minutes for the following meeting, the trustee regular meeting, April 11th, 2023, and the special work session meeting, April 25th, 2023.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, we call the wall, please.
Trustee Barney?
Yes.
Trustee Hofermeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, we call the wall, please.
Trustee Barney?
Yes.
Trustee Hofermeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAbey?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Schultz, we call the wall, please.
Trustee Barney?
Yes.
Trustee Hofermeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAbey?
Motion to take a break?
Just say yes.
Oh, yes.
That motion passes. At this time, we will take a five-minute recess.
So with that, the other things I had to report legislatively, I'm sure you're all aware of, the Senate working on House Ball 33, they're trying to increase the percentage of local government fund that will come back to townships. They have asked for townships to write in and talk to your respective senators and...
Do we need a letter of support from the board?
That would be up to the board. I'm happy to prepare that if you'd like.
I think that would be a good thing.
Okay.
Look at them, I think it's 1.7% to 2.5%, so that's legislative what I had. The other things, let's see, so like I said, I was at Storypoint today, Chief Thomas and Diane went, that they're just remarkable partners, and they are so appreciative of everything the township does. Admire, chief was over doing work on the sprinkler systems and the fire pieces of the building, and he was told that they have two tenants at this time, so it looks like a third building will begin. I'm going to find out when, haven't heard anything about the line. Library loss split has been recorded, so we look for that to move forward. And then the other, well, you know about the Veterans Committee meeting tomorrow. The other meeting we had, we've had two with the schools. One was a kickoff meeting for the grant that Chuck worked on, it's safe travel, and that's for sidewalks for east and north. So the first phase of the grant is just to hire someone to do the study. So their next steps are to, they just sent us an email outboard to the board that they're going to study traffic patterns, dismissal at dismissal and arrival, look into their needs, talk to stakeholders, and then they do plan to have stakeholder meetings as well, where people like you could come and talk on behalf of the board and residents and parents. So more to come on that, but we did have our initial kickoff meeting that went well. And all of these gentlemen attended the meeting for the community fest for the Saturday, and it was universally voted that due to an 80% chance of terrible weather Friday through Sunday, there's no way with the car show, no way with the blowups, the movie would be a mess out there. So we're looking to postpone, maybe we could add the car show to September night concert. So we're looking at other options, but we had everything ready, and we have some new material that we can use in the future. So that was everything I had.
So that is canceled?
It is canceled. Do you have any questions, Humane?
Yes. So the feedback that we got from the schools, because I think part of it was the North Carnival, is there, are they, I have no idea, so...
They were also a favorite, they were some of the stronger ones, proponents of canceling.
I'm sorry, I'm making a makeup date. Is that too far in the distance for them, or...
Did they give you, I wasn't there, so...
Yeah, they, they're interested in just canceling that portion of it, definitely. They might, they may, they have the games available, so they could tie them into another event, but they're, you know, end of the year festivities, that's going to be canceled. And they have plenty of events scheduled for beginning of the year.
I think we have a touch of truck with North, is that cheap next week? So that's coming up, so we will participate in that.
Where you spray water and whatnot.
So the nice, the really neat thing is that the principals, I know Dr. Gillespie is retiring, but the principals have been so excited to work with us and become more engaged, and they really want to pool resources, so I think you're going to see more to come, especially with our next-door neighbors. Denise has just been really enthusiastic, so that, that's been another, another very cool thing.
I do have a couple of questions about economic development.
Okay.
Slash zoning. A while ago, we passed a motion or a resolution for the canal road property. Any kind of update of where that stands?
I do have an update on that, and so we were, we've done everything we can up to this point. Right now, they did some of their due diligence, and they realized that an emergency management plan is no longer presently up to date, and it's in process of being updated and should be updated, what, August, September? Chief Thomas?
Yeah, they just sent out a notice for the second meeting. Usually there's three or four meetings and they finish the plan. They have a consultant writing the plan, and it's just a revision of the existing plan, but it's a, it's a mitigation plan that's required hand-in-hand with that grant.
Okay.
And it expired in '21, and they think COVID kind of kicked everything out, so the EMA just got a track with it, so that's, as far as I know, the only, so, hold on that process is to get that plan approved at the state level, and then that should clear the funds.
Right, yeah, since it's, it's being funded through FEMA Hazard Mitigation Program, that's a requirement, and they didn't catch that, it was an expired plan till...
So where are...
And they're aware of the situation, and it's just kind of waiting till that gets passed, then we can do the appraisal of the property.
Okay, so we're not even at any, we're not even at that step yet to...
Right. We can't sign any funds till that's, that's square, so looking at August, September.
And I've been at the Casey's, it's great.
Same, we ordered pizza one night.
Yeah, and I want to thank Mr. Owens for staying on Casey's, about making sure the signage inside stated that it was in Fairfield Township, not in Hamilton, so thank you for that. And what was the other economic about? I've noticed some, some construction, Dersby move for Christian Brothers, I think, is going. Great.
That's correct, yeah, they look like they're having some activity out there. They haven't really given us an anticip, I haven't received any anticipation of real construction activity, but they're moving forward, they're getting active again, yeah.
That's good. And then one comment I have as far as administrator's report is, I noticed there was a tree falling down in the median between Home Depot and Kmart, Kmart, Qumart, and I emailed the administrator, and within probably 12 hours, she had already had the Public Works Department take care of the issue. So that was very quick, fast work, and thank you for getting that done, because I did have a concern that it might go all the way over. It's not a really tall tree, but, and so it's kind of advantageous that we also had the Public Works Department here giving a presentation, because that was a quick response for them.
Are you able to say that?
Yeah, it's at stake. Any other comments or questions for the administrator?
Will we be ribbon-cutting at Casey's or not?
They haven't given us any indication, do you know? You know, let's talk to the chamber, she'll be there tomorrow for the veterans' memorial meeting.
You said the bonds for sewer grade have been sold or not?
I have not heard that it's been sold yet. No.
And do you have a date on the last day or no?
No date yet.
And maybe for the public, you could give us an update on the Butler County Crisis Stabilization Unit? You gave us, I think you sent us an email or mentioned it last...
I did, yes, yes, I did, and so Dr. Rasmus has worked with trustee Harkemeyer, as well as...
Let me back up this again.
Yeah, I was going to say, well, you have more of the history.
Yeah, at the county level, Commissioner Carpenter is interested in a number of different housing initiatives, but this particular initiative is this Crisis Stabilization Center, and because they are looking at locating this, it's in Hamilton, but it is right next door to Fairfield Township, there could be implications to Fairfield Township. So I invited staff to meet with Dr. Rasmus and express any concerns that we have, so that they would be made aware of that. The goal of the stabilization unit is not a long-term thing, it is something where people would be brought in, I think the window is maybe 24 to 72 hours before they would be relocated to a different place that would perhaps serve them better. There's a lot there, and if you have any questions, I would recommend reaching out to Dr. Rasmus on this. He is definitely going to be more of the expert on this, and he's very, very willing to meet with, with the two of you gentlemen in order to answer any questions that you might have regarding security, regarding patient management, all of those things. But this is something globally that has been identified as a need in Fairfield Township, and that facility is, is back there, so...
And he did email me and invite to meet with, if you're interested, he was going to give me some dates and times, so once I have that, I was going to forward it to all of you, so...
I would invite him to come to the meeting.
We did, actually, so maybe I can get him to come to the next one.
We definitely made that invitation to him, but I also wanted in advance of that to get the information to both of you, so that if you wanted to do any research before he came before the board, if you wanted to reach out to him in advance of that, you would have the opportunity to do so.
So this is on the county property?
Correct, in Hamilton.
Kind of back by the Humane's, the Animal Friends, back by Nine Combs over there.
It's the old town.
Yeah, they're rehabbing, so it's substantially less expensive.
They're not doing anything with that building. It's a farm that isn't...
They're doing that building.
They're rehabbing it.
They're rehabbing it.
I thought we were losing that building with the road extension. So this is a county building, a county program?
To the best of my knowledge, yes, but again, I would, I would definitely reach out to Dr. Rasmus with any...
I'm sure Mr. Burning's read all this, and met with staff, I mean, do you have any concern at all about a voluntary type service, that can walk in and walk out anytime they want?
It was almost tough. Good question. But it's kind of my meat.
Well, I understand it's needed for the county, I don't know if it's needed right there, you know, I mean, geographically speaking, everybody that comes in, anybody being dropped off is going to put on a piece of road to be dead air, and that's what it's going to be. I just, again, I would have concerns about security, very busy highway with no shoulders, no sidewalk, those types of things, I was, I'm sure.
Security came up, and they talked about the security that they'll actually pay, not expecting us to, for Hamilton to do that, so they did discuss heading security on site, so...
It was a rather lengthy meeting, we brought up a lot of concerns and...
Any notes from the meeting I could read, or...
I would recommend if you have any, I would reach out to Dr. Rasmus and discuss any questions or concerns that you have with him.
I'll take a look, I might have written some down, I will, anything I have, I will send to you.
Anything else for Ms. Monahar?
Oh, I do have one thing. If we could, I would, as many of you know, one of my pet peeves is being known as Fairfield Township, to Ms. Maria's point too, but I would really like to see us in... was a tree falling down in the median between Home Depot and Kmart, Kmart, Qumart. And I emailed the administrator. And within probably 12 hours, she had already had the Public Works Department take care of the issue. So that was very quick, fast work. And thank you for getting that done because I did have a concern that it might go all the way over. It's not a really tall tree, but so it's kind of advantageous that we also had the Public Works Department here giving a presentation. Because that was a quick response for them.
Are you able to say that?
Yeah, it's at stake.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions for the administrator?
Will we be ribbon cutting at Casey's or not?
They haven't given us any indication. Do you know, let's talk to the chamber. She'll be there tomorrow for the Veterans Memorial Meeting.
You said the bonds for Sewer Road have been sold or not?
I have not heard that it's been sold yet. No.
And did you have a date on the last day or no?
No date yet.
And maybe for the public, you could give us an update on the Butler County Crisis Stabilization Unit. You gave us, I think you sent us an email or mentioned it last...
I did, yes. Yes, I did. And so Dr. Rasmus has worked with trustee Huckmeyer.
Let me back up this again.
Yeah, I was going to say, well, you have more of the history.
Yeah, at the county level, Commissioner Carpenter is interested in a number of different housing initiatives. But this particular initiative is this Crisis Stabilization Center. And because they are looking at locating this, it's in Hamilton, but it is right next door to Fairfield Township. There could be implications to Fairfield Township. So I invited staff to meet with Dr. Rasmus and express any concerns that we have, so that they would be made aware of that. The goal of the stabilization unit is not a long term thing. It is something where people would be brought in. I think the window is maybe 24 to 72 hours before they would be relocated to a different place that would perhaps serve them better. There's a lot there. And if you have any questions, I would recommend reaching out to Dr. Rasmus on this. He is definitely going to be more of the expert on this. And he's very, very willing to meet with the two of you gentlemen in order to answer any questions that you might have regarding security, regarding patient management, all of those things. But this is something globally that has been identified as a need in Fairfield Township. And that facility is back there. So...
And he did email me and invite to meet with, if you're interested. He was going to give me some dates and times. So once I have that, I was going to forward it to all of you. So...
I would invite him to come to the meeting.
We did, actually. So maybe I can get him to come to the next one.
We definitely made that invitation to him. But I also wanted in advance of that to get the information to both of you. So that if you wanted to do any research before he came before the board, if you wanted to reach out to him in advance of that, you would have the opportunity to do so.
So this is on the county property?
Correct, in Hamilton.
Kind of back by the Humane, the Animal Friends, back by Nine Combs over there.
It's the old town.
Yeah, they're rehabbing. So it's substantially less expensive.
They're not doing anything with that building.
They're doing that building.
They're rehabbing it.
They're rehabbing it.
I thought we were losing that building with the road extension. So this is a county building, a county program?
To the best of my knowledge, yes. But again, I would definitely reach out to Dr. Rasmus with any...
[inaudible]
Yeah. This is very, very early in the whole project. And they're being very proactive with the communication, which is why they met with staff.
They met with the city of Hamilton.
They met with the city of Hamilton. And I recommended that they reach out to the two of you. And you can have whatever discussions that you'd like to have before we bring them in to share with the board.
I'm sure Mr. Burns read all this. And met with staff. I mean, do you have any concern at all about a voluntary type service? They can walk in and walk out anytime they want?
It was almost tough. Good question. But it's kind of immediate.
Well, I understand it's needed for the county. I don't know if it's needed right there. Geographically speaking, everybody that comes in, anybody being dropped off is going to put on a hunch of weight to be dead air. And that's what it's still to be. I just, again, I would have concerns about security, very busy highway with no shoulders, no sidewalk, those types of things. I wasn't sure.
Security came up. And they talked about the security that they'll actually pay, not expecting us to, or Hamilton to do that. So they did discuss heading security on site.
It was a rather lengthy meeting. We brought up a lot of concerns and...
Do you have any notes from the meeting I could read or?
I would recommend if you have any, I would reach out to Dr. Rasmus and discuss any questions or concerns that you have with him.
I'll take a look. I might have written some down. Anything I have, I will send to you.
I appreciate it.
Anything else for Ms. Mulder?
Oh, I do have one thing. If we could, I would, as many of you know, one of my pet peeves is being known as Fairfield Township, to Ms. Maria's point too. But I would really like to see us include some strongly worded information that would be given to anyone looking at locating a business here in Fairfield Township. But we are Fairfield Township. We're not Hamilton. Nothing against Hamilton. We're not Liberty. Nothing against them. Nothing against Fairfield. But we're Fairfield Township. And, you know, with our address change project and all of those different ways. But if we can include that, and even when they come to us for approval, we need to say it's Fairfield Township. You need to brand as Fairfield Township. I was at a local business about a month or so ago, and they had a card that said Hamilton. And I said, well, you know, just so you know, you're in Fairfield Township. And they got all, I got a whole explanation. They didn't understand. I gave them a little bit of an explanation. But nothing against any of our surrounding communities. But we're Fairfield Township. This is a fantastic community. We're proud of our community. And I want to make sure the people that are coming here know who we are and say we're Fairfield Township. So if we can put something in that documentation in some way, shape, or form, give them a letter, you know, send out for the people that are still saying that they're Hamilton, that they're not at Fairfield Township. So, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to motions. Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Emma Parton from the Police Department?
I move...
Second.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Schultz, we call a roll, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Huckmeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes. That motion passes. Next is resolutions. May we have the first resolution, please?
Resolution 2365, approving open purchase order balances.
[inaudible]
Second.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Schultz, we call a roll, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Huckmeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution?
Resolution 2366, requesting speed study to determine and declare a reasonable and safe prime of passage speed limit on Princeton Road between the Dead End and State Route 4 bypass in Butler County, Ohio.
I move to adopt Resolution 23-66.
Second. And where does this come in from?
Somebody requested that we have, who requested that we have this?
It came from the county, didn't it? Butler County.
Yeah.
Butler County?
Butler County Engineer's Office brought this to our attention. I think that there's some issues associated with that portion of the road. And I think since it's township, they have to get our approval before they do a study. I don't think there's any cost or anything associated with it does.
It was not, you know, it's a... And again, are we trying to confirm the 45 miles per hour or not? When you do these, you go, they're about to study. So they want to raise it to 50, 55.
Correct.
We're also doing the... Are we doing a traffic count or just have anything to do with the possibility of one day maybe widening the road or?
That's what I said when we emailed, that it's a traffic count, a possibility. If further speaks, I mean, it's a traffic count because that's how we turn the safety.
It would be great to widen that.
Did you forward that immediately?
I cleared the entire world, please.
Any other questions?
I want to, again, know if there's any cost to this.
I remember there not being any cost to Fairfield Township. It was their study. But since it was on our road, they had to have a resolution.
There would be a resolution. But at the same second, I don't know if it was because we requested one on ours, we had to pay for it.
I don't think we had to pay. I don't remember that.
But we ought to know.
Are you needing to read the email before we ask for a vote, trustee?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Okay.
I just like to try to understand where it came from and what the purpose is. Other than that, I'm not saying it doesn't need to be done. I'm just saying that I wondered if it was, when I spoke to the county engineer at the TID meeting a month ago, he had suggested that he had looked for some funds for Princeton Road to rest in. And I mean, I'm sure I had a blank book on my face because I was not aware of that, you know, that he had done it. He ain't getting money, so.
Okay. Fine. Mr. Schultz, we call a roll, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Huckmeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes. And that resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 2367, authorizing debt service payment of $15,481.25 to the Bank of New York Mellon. This is interest payment due for bond.
That's for adopt.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
The west side of Princeton Road?
Correct.
Meaning the west side of the bypass.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Schultz, we call a roll, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Huckmeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution?
Resolution 2368, authorizing debt service payment of $25,075 to US Bank. This is the first interest payment due for bond number two. And it's related to the east side of Princeton Road, the bypass.
That's for adopt.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Schultz, we call a roll, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Huckmeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 2369, authorizing debt service payment of $7,472.40 to PNC Bank. This is interest payment due for bond number three. And this is the TID improvement bond for State Route bypass four.
That's for adopt.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Schultz, we call a roll, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Huckmeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes. And that resolution is adopted. May we have the next resolution?
Resolution 2370, authorizing debt service payment of $527,491.91 to Huntington Bank for repayment of the $5 million general obligation bond that is used for construction of public works building, remodel of the police station, and improvements to Gilmore Road.
That's for adopt.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Schultz, we call a roll, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Huckmeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Next resolution, please?
Resolution 2371, approving purchase of 2024 Ford F550 from Valley Truck Centers for the Fire Department in the amount of $96,298.
This was a first read. And there was an interest of waiting until, or June, the first meeting to adopt. But if anyone would like to make a motion to adopt, I'll entertain it. Okay, well, we will just treat that as a first read. Can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 2372, approving transfer of 2016 Ford F250 from Fire Department to Public Works Department.
So is that a resolution to adopt? I move that we approve 23-72. Is there a second?
Second.
Just to be clear, in the resolution, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. I know you can know it. It's in the book. Is that, the date of that transfer, is that contingent upon the acceptance of the purchase of a replacement vehicle?
I think that it would probably be easier, but I trust the two department heads to work that out. $40,000 will be taken from Bone Bridge and put into the fire fund.
Did we get a legal opinion on that?
Sure. I'm still taking on the resolution. I mean, based on the language of resolution, the transfer will be completed upon approval of the resolution.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you totally on that.
Sure. I mean, if the question is when does this train, when is, oh, sorry.
Oh, you're on.
Am I on? The question, if the question is when does the vehicle transfer?
I read one.
She's, sorry.
You just have to get close.
If the question is when the vehicle transfers, when the effect of the transfer is pursuant just to the language of this resolution, it would be, the vehicle would transfer departments based upon the approval and signage of the resolution. I mean, when the physical transfer occurs, can happen between the department heads.
It could happen anytime after that. This is a little unusual. I mean, you're actually buying it for ourselves?
Yeah, I would say it's a little unusual. I don't think there's anything wrong with doing it. I haven't seen it done that often before.
And so, I mean, do we really have to buy it for ourselves? Or can we just reassign it to a different department?
I mean, you probably could have taken a different avenue. I'm not sure the logistics of the purchase price and why that that was negotiated between the departments. But that's how the resolution reads.
I think this helps offset the third price of the 550. There was a need by the Public Works Department for another vehicle to, because I think it had, it's got a toolbox on it. There was a need for the Public Works Department. And therefore, this could come out of their budget and help offset the hit to the budget of the Fire Department. I think that was the intention of this resolution.
That's correct. And it's a lower price than what they would have found had you found.
Yeah. I had purchased it at $85,000 to try to replace it. And as Chief Thomas has mentioned, it's hard to find anything. So, I mean, that's why I really hadn't, wasn't going to push the issue of trying to get it. But when we talk with one another, you know, it seemed like a win-win for both of us. You know, it's like getting a new truck with only the mileage that it stayed in. So...
And you know who drove it. So it's probably okay.
Pretty sure it's pretty good. So we're going to leave the money from 2031 to 2111. Does the farm we bought this truck from have any bearing on where that money should go?
I don't think that that would track at this point.
It was. So that was, that's, which account is that?
Fire.
That's the fire. Since we bought it with dedicated fire money, so now we're going to put it back. We're going to sell it to the road department and put it back in its same account.
I mean, yeah, with the Fire Department, I mean, has the ability to sell the vehicle. So the money would return to the Fire, you know, the Fire Department's fund.
Is there any law at stake that we have to put people's upper bid for sale? Or we're just transferring it? It's not really, the township still owns it.
Right.
So it's not really leaving our possession. So we don't have to put it up for auction, make it available for the public to purchase?
Right. It's staying within Fairfield Township.
Okay. So make sure we're covering all the legal bases.
Sure.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay. Mr. Schultz, we call a roll, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Huckmeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes. That resolution is adopted.
Did you get any, standing or working with it there?
If we have problems with it, can we go back on the person that we bought it from?
Get the code out.
There's this. I don't know. To do that, around $45,000, you value to get that.
A hot box.
That's true.
Okay. Next resolution is 2373. Can we have that one, please?
acha approving purchase of gray key cell phone technology for the Police Department in the amount of $14,269 for the first year and $13,269 annually. And this is a need that's been determined for evidence collection involving cell phone technology. But that is, as far as my expertise goes. So any questions should be directed to the chief.
This is a first read. So does anyone have any questions for the chief on this cell phone technology?
Would you care to give us two minutes?
Sure. We currently do not possess this technology. We use other departments. What's happened is, as you all know, cell phones are used extensively in every crime. So it's gone up exponentially as far as what the other departments are handling. So they're backlogged. And we're at a time that we need this technology. We have to have it because everybody that we arrest for anything has a cell phone. So then we conduct a search warrant on that cell phone. And we are currently still working, the most recent homicide with Cincinnati through looking at what's inside that phone, which is very telling. So that's just one example. But we have sexual assaults that are occurring. We just cracked another one with another department of an individual we arrested. We need it. It's backlogged, so we're not able to get him as quickly as we can for prosecution. Prosecutors will not probably take a case now unless they're able to go through the cell phone information and come up with charges. And it's $900 of the first fee, 14269, is for training three of the detectives that we have. So every year after that, it goes down to 14269 from 14269.
And with, if detectives leave and we replace the detectives, will they be able to be trained in-house? Or is that...
Yeah, this is web-based. And that's what's good about this technology. You don't have to go anywhere. You don't have to send anybody to school. They can just do it on the web.
And then the other question I have, reading the email, I think it said it's good for 30 applications?
For 30 cell phones, right. If it goes above and beyond that, we would have to pay an extra fee. But we don't, right now, anticipate going more than 30. Since probably mid-year last year, we've probably done 10, maybe 12.
So if we have to go beyond 30, will that we have to do a different?
Correct.
Contract? And then?
Yes.
And a new contract would void this one?
Yes.
Okay.
We think 30 is fine for now.
Okay.
And the 30 is what you're talking about?
Yes.
Is this, how long a contract is this?
It's a yearly contract. And there is supporting documentation. Should be the gray key licensing options. In essence, that's the one that we have. It's called Essentials, which is 30. Advanced Action is what they call it. National is 125. We just don't want to go that high. And then the premier one is $50,000, over $50,000. And that's unlimited. We just don't need that right now.
So you say it's backed up? Are you talking about other departments are backed up? So we're having to wait to get it through?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So how quickly would this be available for us?
Well, it's all web-based. So as soon as we sign that, we, yeah, we're good to go. Sure.
And the resolution is, I don't know what the title is. It may say first reading in the title. But on the resolution itself, it's saying we're dispensing with the secondary names.
Well, if we want to approve it tonight, we're dispensing with the secondary.
I mean, that's what the resolution says.
So we don't, as of tonight, have to rewrite the resolution to admit that line?
There aren't much to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
And that says written, so we'll vote on it. And I told him the first reading, we'll vote on it.
Voting on it, yes. Okay. Mr. Schultz, we call a roll, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Huckmeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. May we have the next one, please?
Resolution 2374, also a first reading, and also has this section to dispensing. So we have the same issue. But it's resolution approving purchase of Sundance Records Management System for the Police Department in the amount of $29,348 for the first year and $16,860 for the first year and sixteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars annually. And I know this is an enhanced records management system, but again, Chief, she probably is the expert.
So this will replace our current RMS system, which is a record management system, basically entails all the reporting that we have. It would, the current system does not allow police officers to complete reports in their cars, which more modern police departments are doing that. It's more efficient because they can get it done on the street as opposed to coming back into the office. Our current program crashes, the vendor for the RMS system does not provide any software updates, so basically, we're on our own to try to fix it. The Sundance system is used locally by several departments, seems to be very reliable. Report approval and submission process, the current system is not adequate, it's reported, it has to be printed on paper, reviewed by supervisors, marked off, and then reprinted after the corrections are made, so that another supervisor can approve it. In short, Sundance allows everything to be self-contained within that system, and it can be corrected while in the system as opposed to bringing the reports, which is kind of not too much waste. Inco printers and ID scanners, we continue to handwrite citations and forward the carbon copies to the forge, which is very antiquated. This system is integrated with the CAD system and auto-populates the violated information into the ticket, and thus be able to produce eventually a printed copy of the citation. Again, no updates for the current system, the Sundance system provides frequent updates and pushes out new ORC law changes. Sundance system will integrate the CAD and dispatch information into the Sundance system, which increases the accuracy of the information, and will also auto-populate reports. Call for service statistics, we are not able to get that on our own, we have to go through Public County Dispatch, sometimes it takes a while. Case management, this provides case management component that is useful for all the police department. Currently, we do not have this capability, it helps out the detectives even more. Currently, our data uploads occur manually, and then Sundance would do it automatically. Also, vehicle impound forms, currently, the officers handle write the impound forms, Sundance offers the impound form in a reporting software, so it's basically a very modern system compared to what we have, and it, the old system just really kind of needs to go.
So, and I'm not sure if I missed part of it, but you're saying we'd be able to run our own record of the number of calls?
Data, yeah, we can't do that right now.
Right.
Yeah.
What are we paying now for the system we have?
You don't believe we're not paying anything for it? Yeah, I mean, that's how old it is, somebody bought it, some big vendor bought it, and it just kind of fizzled, which happens.
Motion to adopt. We have that already?
Second. Any other questions or comments?
Looks like you're asking for a quarterly payment plan.
That's what I'm reading into it. Okay, Ms. Schultz, you call the role, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Hockamay?
Yes.
Trustee Machaboo?
Yes. That resolution is adopted, maybe we have the next resolution, please.
Resolution twenty-three seventy-five, authorizing the Fairfield Township Administrator to execute all necessary documents to renew the township's coverage with OTARMA through this Risk Source Clark Theaters Insurance Agency at a cost of one hundred fifty-five thousand one hundred four dollars, effective June first, twenty twenty-three through June first of twenty twenty-four.
Motion to adopt.
Any questions or comments?
Got everything, all of our new stuff included?
Yeah, we continually updated its equipment and buildings, added or replaced, divided among the funds, and it's not a large increase from last year, same with the cyber, and then we did receive our check back from OTARMA, it's a rebate of like six thousand eight hundred dollars, so the past couple of years has been a hundred percent at six thousand eight hundred, it's still something.
Ms. Schultz, you call the role, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Hockamay?
Yes.
Trustee Machaboo?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Can we have the next one, please?
Resolution twenty-three seventy-six, authorizing the Fairfield Township Administrator to execute all necessary documents to renew the township's coverage for cyber insurance through CFC at an annual cost of ten thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, effective June first, twenty twenty-three through June first, twenty twenty-four.
I move to adopt resolution twenty-three seventy-six.
Second.
So is there any cyber protection in the OTARMA?
Have to pull that up. Which I do have a document.
The number of pages, but I see, I see some items listed.
It's my, I believe there's minor, I know I increased, we were pretty low a couple years ago, and I increased to one million dollar coverage. There is there's an overview that might tell us. If there is minimal, I know that.
On the very first page, after the, a couple of pages up front, it says cyber liability of main note.
That's through the other company, not through OTARMA?
That's through OTARMA.
Where, hold on, where is that?
It says page one of two, but there are several pages in front of that. Schedule of coverages. Cyber breach, cyber crime, cyber liability.
This might, you know, this might be the cyber portion that works with OTARMA, like the TPA, like we have for the agent for the other insurance. That would be my guess.
It's like it's on page five, cyber coverages.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's because they bill us in there, don't they? It's through OTARMA, the CFC is through OTARMA.
Yeah, that's what, that's, that's just, yes.
Yes, that's what, that's why they're putting it on there.
Well, I wouldn't be paid one bill.
I think this is just, if I'm not mistaken, this is just a summary of the coverages we have. The actual bill for the one hundred fifty-five is page one, showing the invoice, and then the other invoices with the other, the CFC invoices with the other resolution.
CFC is a completely different situation.
Yeah, it's, it's with the, the CFC is with the other resolution, I believe this is just a summary of the coverages we have, because they all go, OTARMA keeps our overall coverages, I think, together.
And then we have agents through them.
Yeah, like Risk Source Theaters and
Furman Flowers.
Furman and Flowers, so we have all the coverages, and then OTARMA just summarizes it for us, that we work through them. So if we had something, I think we'd go through OTARMA, it's just CFC, the company that houses.
Before we pay this, this ten thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars, you need to find out if this coverage is included in the one hundred fifty-five thousand.
Okay.
That's the way it reads to me, is that we have with OTARMA, which is the OTA's insurance risk pool, we have a million dollars for the coverage.
Yeah, I do not think that's the way it goes, but I'll double check. I think OTARMA just houses it all, and CFC's a third party, and Risk Source Theaters is a third party, because when I've had to call to do anything, I'll call OTARMA, and they'll usually refer me to Risk Source Theaters or whoever's holding that particular.
They're the agency, they're the agent for the, for the plan, but CFC's completely different.
I believe they will through OTARMA, but I will double check that for sure, period. Okay, I'll double check it. We can easily double check OTARMA. Yeah, because if you actually look on page five, it shows the breakdown of the one hundred fifty-five, and the cyber is not on that list. It's got your faithful performance of duty, employee dishonesty, all that, property liability, automobile general liability, it has all that with one fifty-five, and the cyber's not in that total, because it's paid to CFC. Does that make sense?
That makes sense to me. Now that you've pointed it out.
I hear what you're saying.
You just want me to double check?
Oh, I want you to triple check, because over here, it says, it says schedule of coverages, and it says a million, it doesn't say, then have a star by it, says C, CFC.
Yeah, but the ones that are through Risk Theaters don't have a star either, that says, call us, call them, you know?
All right, well, call them, please.
I will, I absolutely will.
Ask them how much coverage is included?
I will.
Before we pay the ten thousand?
I will.
It seems to me, just working off of a memory, that maybe OTARMA did not include that in the past, years, years gone by, and now they do. But again, I could be wrong on that. So if we pass this twenty-three seventy-six, and then we don't, we don't send the money in, no big deal, right? Peel it, or?
And we can, yeah, vote to peel it.
I'll make sure I have an answer, bye. I'll email it out, how about that? Good?
Okay, with that, Trustee Machaboo?
Sure.
Okay, Ms. Schultz, you call the role, please.
Yes. Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Hockamay?
Yes.
Trustee Machaboo?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. Maybe we have the next resolution, please.
Resolution twenty-three seventy-seven, authorizing the appointment of part-time firefighter EMT Ashton McCann to the Fairfield Township Fire Department at an hourly rate of eighteen dollars and fifty cents for the twelve-month probationary period.
I move to adopt twenty-three dash seven seven.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, you call the role, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Hockamay?
Yes.
Trustee Machaboo?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Maybe we have the next resolution.
Resolution twenty-three seventy-eight, authorizing the appointment of part-time firefighter EMT Isaiah Hartness to the Fairfield Township Fire Department at an hourly rate of eighteen dollars and fifty cents for the twelve-month probationary period.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, you call the role, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Hockamay?
Yes.
Trustee Machaboo?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Next resolution, please.
Resolution twenty-three seventy-nine, declaring nuisance and ordering abatement on the properties listed below, and further authorizing the zoning administrator to initiate complaint. Properties include thirty-nine eighty-six Bayberry Drive for RV parking, forty-one twenty-eight Bayberry Court for commercial vehicle, vehicle parking, thirty-five eleven Liberty Bell Drive for junk and debris, fifty-four thirty-five Wesley Way for junk and debris and applicable vehicle, seventy-five ninety-five Linkler Drive for sanitation and vegetation.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Ms. Schultz, could you fix the typo on the Wesley Way?
Sure.
For junk and debris instead of June and debris?
Absolutely.
Okay, we don't need to, I thought, we don't need to change that, okay. Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, you call the role, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Hockamay?
Yes.
Trustee Machaboo?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Announcement, as you heard before, our Spring Fest and Car Show is canceled for this Saturday. Offices are closed for Memorial Day holiday on Monday, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. The Veterans Memorial Ribbon Cutting and Dedication is hand parade this Saturday, June third, twenty twenty-three, the ribbon cutting will be at one thirty. Classic Car Cruising Wednesday, June seventh, at Bridgewater Falls, from five to eight PM. And the next Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting is Thursday, June the first, at eight thirty AM. Any questions or any comments from the board? Trustee Machaboo?
No, thank you.
Trustee Hockamay?
I do have one. Last Saturday, a citizen brought a concern, my attention, on Bennett Drive, last, I want to say Thursday, a dog was attacked by a coyote in the middle of the afternoon, about two-thirty in the afternoon in those industrial neighborhoods, so the dog died, and it was, you know, the family had some other things going on, so it did not help. I think that the city of Fairfield has had some concerns about coyotes as well, and I think that there were a number of concerned citizens, that we're not comfortable with this situation, especially a coyote attack at two-thirty in the afternoon, I mean, nighttime maybe, but that's the middle of the day, and anyways, there are a number of concerned citizens, and I think it might be time that as a board, we start to look at some of the mitigation things, that's like some of the surrounding communities, I think Fairfield has taken some steps, and we might want to look into that, too.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, I hope everyone has a great Memorial Day, and I look forward to our ribbon cutting on the third of June. And again, I just want to thank the administrator for being responsive to items that come up out of the blue at Tommy Manor, so thank you again for that. Okay, at this time, there's a need to recess to executive session, ORC one twenty-one, point twenty-two G one, consider the employment compensation of a public employee or official as our motion to adjourn to, into convene executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Schultz, you call the role, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Hockamay?
Yes.
Trustee Machaboo?
Yes.
That motion passes, we will convene executive session at nine forty-five PM. There may or may not be action to follow.